This is a publicly, uh, public hearing on the budget that was posted and advertised. Will you all please rise? We begin the meeting with prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Could we not please salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council Samaras.
Here.
Council Belanger.
Here.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Council Kennedy.
Here.
Council Leahy.
Here.
Council Martin.
Council Mercia.
Here.
Council Malanazzo.
Here.
Council Rourke.
Here.
A present.
A present. Before I turn it over to the manager for introductory statements, just wanted to provide a little bit of information to members. On your desk this evening there, you have two documents, or you have a number of documents, but two documents that I contacted the auditor and asked her to provide, which she did, and we appreciate it, Madam Auditor. One is a year-to-date expenditure report, which shows current appropriations, the revised budget, and what is available in the various line items throughout the city. The second, it's just the second part of that, they're the enterprise funds. So, that is done by, um, by account number and sequential order. And we will also, if you turn to section six in your budget, it is the appropriation order, and those individual line items, you'll see it starts with waste, it starts with the funds, the enterprise fund, wastewater, parking water, Lowell Memorial Auditorium, et cetera, and then it goes right into the departments. So, these documents, these line items coincide with the order of the year-to-date expenditures. So, if you want to reference back and forth. And then, thirdly, for more detail, this order also coincides with the department details, section four, and it begins on page, legislative, which is the city council, which is the first item, is on page four. So, we've got year-to-date that coincides with appropriation order, and to get further details on these line items, it's all in the same order, starting with city council, which is account 111. So, so we get organized. Any questions thus far? Okay, I just thought that was important to lay out. So, with that, Mr. Manager, we will begin these budget deliberations with you, and then go to members, and then we'll go right into discussion, various line items. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and through you to the city councilors. During my overview, when I initially presented the fiscal year 16 budget, I emphasized both the major highlights as well as the challenges associated with this budget. Some of the highlights included four new police officers, plus two additional officers moving back into patrol rather than civilian positions. We have investments in high-tech public safety tools such as a gunshot detection system and social media monitoring software. We have continued investment in the Lowell Public Schools by meeting and likely exceeding our net school spending requirement, and we've continued focus on the economic development with the Hamilton Canal and air industrial plants. However, developing this budget did not come without challenges. The first step in building this document before you tonight required the financial team to close an $11 million gap, all without raiding city reserves. This year, the Department of Revenue charges, our cherry-sheet assessments, increased by $2.8 million, while our local aid increased by $778,000. Other financial increases included a $3 million increase in our pension assessment from fiscal year 15, an additional $1 million pension assessment for fiscal 16, $18.8 million in direct cash contribution to the Lowell Public Schools, an additional $2.5 million charter school assessment, an additional $500,000 in the Greater Lowell Regional Technical High School Assessment, and a carryforward deficit of approximately $500,000 for snow and ice. Overall, this budget does include a modest 1.5% tax increase. I believe it is more physically prudent to plan for moderate incremental increases versus having years where you realize spikes of 3.5% tax hikes. I pledge to continue the fiscal oversight policies instituted last winter. For example, all purchases will be reviewed and screened, the continuance of the vacancy review committee, and utilizing Lowell Stat to analyze department expenditures. We will doggedly monitor new growth for the first quarter of the year to evaluate our financial situation, because as you know, the tax rate isn't set until November or December. So, we will be able to analyze our situation in November and December, and hopefully even lower the 1.5% increase, if at all possible. I am proud to present the fiscal year 16 budget, which includes many highlights, considering the many financial challenges we faced in developing this document. I believe this is a fiscally responsible and sound budget, and I look forward to your questions on the fiscal year 16 budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions, discussion? Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are opening this forum up to the public to make comments, too, are we?
Yes, we are. As soon as comments from the members, we can go into that right now, because it is a advertised public hearing.
Because I'd rather the public speak before I do.
So, why don't we go right into the public hearing? It is a public hearing, and it has been advertised. So, we'll begin by opening up this portion of the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak in favor, or in opposition, because this entire meeting is open to the public, whether you want to speak in general, or if you would like to speak in support or in opposition of any particular line item as we proceed. Seeing none, the public hearing will remain open, and with that, Chair recognizes Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lately, I have nothing but time on my hands, so I went through this budget unlike any other time, page by page. I know it's quite thick, and I went in with an ax, and I came out with a butter knife, because I couldn't find any cuts. I see it being very precise. I don't see any waste here. I don't see any extravagance here. I was very impressed with the outline of this budget, unlike anything that I've ever seen. Each department gave informative information, they set goals, they focused on strategies and accomplishments. I looked at this document as not only figures and a budget, but also an important piece, informative data that tells me so much of what I've always liked to know about the city. Fires, how many calls were made, number of false alarm calls, health, how many immunizations, schools, student-teacher ratio, recycling rate, energy conservation measures, economic development, how many single-family building permits were issued. I don't see any waste here. I see information that after the budget is long over, I will still have this book to refer to and look at it again. I'm sure I didn't get every detail, but it had so much information. I commend every department that put their time and effort and hard work into all this information, data, that I could never even imagine. Things, I was amazed. I always wondered, what about this and what about that? It's all in here. I have to commend them for the hard work and the delicate, intricate details that they provided in this book. I see the hard work. I don't see the waste. I know that at budget time, we take every department, and I always feel bad, because we always start at the As and we never start at the Ws, and I like to come here and surprise the department heads sometimes and say, "We're going to start at the back of the book and work our way to the front." But if I had my way, I would move approval. It's not that I want to get out of my duties. I just don't see any cuts. I don't see it, and I'd be the first, along with the mayor, to try to rip this apart piece by piece. I don't see it. And it's not that I don't want to belabor the issue and keep people here all night, because that's my job, and if I have to stay here till 11:00 and come back on Thursday, I would do that. So, I don't know if my colleagues want to go department by department, page by page. I don't know how they want to do that, and I would be willing to move approval. The fact is, people have questions here. I have a few questions, not that would be related to money, but to find out, how did you get there? I did notice about this budget that electric, electricity line item, most places were reduced so, so far, that I think the conservation measure and electricity, we're saving money by the improvements and upgrades that we're making here. So, I'm very, very pleased to those of you who put this book together with the city departments, Mr. Healy and Mr. Khan, Connor Baldwin, very, very, very good, Rodney, all the people, Mr. McGovern, of course, under your leadership, Mr. Manager. I'm very impressed. This is not going to be a budget book in my house. It's going to be a document to refer back quite a bit. So, I'm very pleased. I want to make that motion. I don't know where it'll go. I think people have questions, so maybe we'll have to go department to department just to see if anybody has questions, but I don't have any cuts. I'm sorry. I don't have it. Thank you.
Most by Council Mercia move to approve. Second by Council Malanazzo. Council Malanazzo?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'll certainly go with the wishes of my colleagues regarding going through each department, but I just want to also kind of repeat what Council Mercia said. The administration did a very good job putting together the budget. As I look through it, the reserves are good, the debt service is within reason. I do have a couple of questions as it relates to, for example, the school department, where I read in the newspaper that they're carrying forward a $1 million, a $1.1 million salary in wages that were not spent in FY '15. Is that 1.1 carryover figured in the $165 million number that we're, will be providing the school department? I guess that's, that's my first question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, the amount we've provided as the single-line item appropriation for the school department is the, uh, the variance between our number and the, the number that was included in the school committee's number that was recently voted on by the school committee was the 1.14 million dollar. That was, that was the variance, and the, the school department is going to fund that from their suspense account.
Okay.
So, there is still a balance in the suspense account of $301,000. However, they are going to fund the 1.14 million dollars from that suspense account.
Okay. Thank you. Also relating to the school department, we had talked about the, are in the communication from the city manager, you talked about the 1.5% increase in the tax levy. We'll have to go back, the administration will have to go back to the school department and look at the memorandum of understanding relative to net school spending. Are those discussions ongoing now, as we? Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's a very important point, Counselor, and something that the administration under the city manager is diligently working towards, and that's working collaboratively with the school department to better capture those in-kind costs that the city departments provide for the schools. So, this includes everything from public works, work on the school buildings, to credits we receive for the trash and recycling services that we provide to the schools. All of those services are, are set in a memorandum of understanding that was signed by the city council and the school committee back in fiscal year 2006-ish. So, as we, as time has progressed, there is a need to revisit a number of those, and, you know, the, the discussions are ongoing. We had been working with the, the business manager, the deputy superintendent Jay Lang, on revising that memorandum of understanding, and that's a very important, important accomplishment that the, the manager intends to square away this summer. And we do, with that, and in addition to that, the public works department better capturing the work that they do on the schools, we do fully intend to meet for a second year in a row the net school spending number.
Great. Okay, thank, thank you. One final question, this score round, if I could, Mr. Mayor. The vote is, the appropriations vote, order is 334 million and change, and then the actual budget's about 363, 364 million and change. And part of the difference is the indirect costs for the enterprise funds of about $6.7 million. My question is, is that spread out evenly over the three enterprise funds account, or is that, say, weighted heavily with parking or wastewater or?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's based on a, a set calculation between each enterprise fund and the services that are provided to support each one of the funds from all of the city departments. So, the basic formula is set up as a percentage of revenues that the enterprise funds generate as, as compared with total revenues from the city, and then that number is applied to, say, the, the services of the purchasing department, the services of human, excuse me, human relations, payroll, et cetera, et cetera. All of those costs that are expended to support the enterprise funds, the enterprise funds reimburse the general fund for those services.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Just one final comment. I was impressed with the fact, by department, you actually outlined not only the, the expenses, but also where the revenue was coming from, broken down by tax levy, broken down by intergovernmental funds, license and fees, and I thought that was very helpful as well. So, again, congratulations to you, Mr. Manager, and to your administrative finance staff. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, if I could just, I just wanted to provide a little bit more information on your, information on your first question. The money in the school department is essentially a 1% for this year. Teacher's salary, excuse me, teacher contract expires this year, so this is actually in arrears. That 1% is carried, and as Mr. Baldwin alluded to, that, that is carried, but there's not an additional 1%. So, it's, that one is carried, and it's covered. There's not going to be a, a structural deficit, but at that point, there's nothing else in the budget. There is money, there's 1.4 in the suspense account that was cut this last fiscal year that remains there. There is projected to be a surplus to, that will be transferred into the suspense account again, and, and the variance is about 300,000. So, there is, but there's no, there is no money for additional raises for, for next year. So, I just wanted to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I got Council Kennedy and then Council Samaras. Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the motion before us is to just vote the bottom line of the budget.
Correct.
And just to prove it that way. I, I'm probably in the minority, but I am not, I, I can't support that motion. I happen to think that, and I don't have a lot of cuts to make in this budget, but I do think that going through the budget, department by department, line item by line item, is a worthwhile exercise. I think it provides a lot of information to people. I think it provides information to the general public, and so that's my preference is to do that. But given that the motion may pass, let me just ask a couple of questions, if I could, regarding the enterprise fund in the event the motion passes. Maybe I won't have an opportunity to do that this evening, but, and we spoke about this a little earlier, I think, Mr. Baldwin, but your forecast for the enterprise funds for water and sewer and for parking show that they'll run at a deficit, and that deficit seems to, to go on. I think it was in, in the, maybe the parking department, the deficit goes to 2020 and beyond that. And so, outside of this budget, at some point, we're going to have to turn that around. We can't, we can't run a deficit every year, and so what are we going to be looking at? We're going to be looking at an increase in the water and sewer charge at some point, and what are we going to do about parking?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the, all the other counselors and the, the public at home, we're, the, the five-year forecast for each of the enterprise funds are on, they're included in section two, starting on page 80, 82 for the general fund. So, I, I think this is what Counselor Kennedy is referring to, and specifically for, there's one included for each of the enterprise funds, and this is part of our five-year forecasting that we continuously update and provide to the council each year. Specifically for the parking enterprise fund, which is one that this ye, well, for the coming fiscal year will be operating at a surplus. So, if you look at the bottom line, where it has listed surplus slash deficit for fiscal 16, the, the enterprise fund will be operating at a almost $69,000 surplus, and each of the enterprise funds, as, as the council knows, but for the, the public at home, has a fund balance. So, there's, there's a bit of a difference between it operating at an annual deficit as opposed to the fund balance being drawn to zero. So, for the parking enterprise, which does include additional debt service for the parking garage repairs that were recent, the loan order that was recently approved by the city council, if nothing were, if nothing were to happen with the revenues, if there were no rate increase considered, the fund balance would support the enterprise through 2020. And you can see that on the bottom right, in year 2020, that would be the last year that the, the fund balance could support the operations of the enterprise. When we talk about wastewater, the fund balance here, while it is operating at a deficit for fiscal 16 and sort of continues to decline through '17, but then starts to uptick through 2018, these are based on forecasted rate increases over the next five years. Obviously, lots of things can change year to year in terms of the, the, I'm sorry, the receipts of the enterprise, and I guess with, with the sewer enterprise fund in particular, there will be some significant debt service that will be included on top of what's listed here as we bond the $40 million sewer separation projects that are ongoing in the, in the sewer enterprise. For water, which has been one of the healthier enterprise funds for quite some time, the fund balance will be able to support any annual deficit through 2020 without any rate increase. So, I guess that's sort of a, a general overview of the three enterprise funds. However, it is a matter worth consideration by the council in terms of any rate increases. You can see the ones that are included in the forecast for the sewer enterprise. However, for parking and water, the forecasts are based on no, no increase to revenues.
Okay. So, there's, we're going to have to address that at some point in the future, aren't we, for both of those enterprise accounts?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay. And then, my last item that I have is, and I, I do want to say that I think this is an excellent document, and it's loaded with, with good information, so I, I would want to commend everybody on, on putting the document together. One of the pieces of information is the, has to do with, with snow and the snow removal. And there is a chart in the budget that indicates that during this past winter, we spent about $40,000 an inch for snow removal. And my question is that in the years prior to that, it was lower, I think it was maybe like $35,000 an inch or whatever. It, it, it seems to me that there should be, and I understand that there was a lot of snow this past winter, but it seems to me that there should be some sort of an economy of scale that should come into play, so that the cost of, of removing, say, two inches of snow should be about the same as doing four inches of snow. So, then the, that should, number should be coming down, and instead it's going up. And I understand that it's not totally accurate, but what it does, I think, indicate is that probably we need to be taking a look at how that department is doing snow removal and whether or not we can do it a little more economically than, than the way we are doing it. Can you speak to that, too?
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Kennedy. I, I think you sort of hit the nail on the head here that there, this chart, which my colleague Rodney Conley, through the Lowell Stat program, provided us after the snow season, as we were looking into snow expenditures for this year. It, it does beg that question of, are there more efficient or effective ways that we can structure either snow removal contracts or the way that we, the way that we operate the snow removal procedures that is a little more operational than financial, that, you know, I may not have a perfect answer for, but the, the, as, you know, I think we, we talked a little bit about before, the amount spent per inch of snow is not necessarily a perfect metric, because all the money that's spent is not necessarily for snow removal. You know, the, the, the equipment also has to be out there when there's ice on the roads, which wouldn't be captured in a per-inch kind of metric. It, you know, if there's, you know, the Salters and Sanders have to be out on the roads, that wouldn't necessarily be captured here. So, perhaps it may be something where we need to be looking at per weather event as opposed to per inch of snow in terms of a better metric, but I think it certainly begs the que, question internally for us to examine if we are pursuing best practices in terms of snow contracting and maybe contacting some of our surrounding communities to get some good ideas. I don't know if, maybe Rodney has some, some other comments?
I would just echo the same comments. That's not exactly a perfect measure. It gives you some sense of how much we're spending per inch, but like you said, maybe weather event or perhaps by road mile may be a more accurate measurement going forward. And we can certainly look into how other communities quantify the relative snow versus the removal costs.
I, I understand that, but in, in that chart, it's just comparing other years in, in Lowell with, so there's always been the same number of miles. I mean, those are pretty constant, right? Those other items are constant. So, it, it's just, I mean, I don't mean to, to be critical about it, but it does, when you look at it, it does make you think that maybe we could be doing something a little bit better than the way we're doing it there now. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel. Council Samaras, then Council Rourke.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Elliott. I just want to commend the city manager and his staff for an excellent budget. Although this is only my second budget, I've had 20 years of budgets as a school administrator, so I've seen them all, and I think this is the best that I've seen or observed. And like Council Mercia stated, there is nothing after going through this budget that I could add in cuts that would, in a sense, help the cost, reduce costs. I don't see where I could do it effectively, not knowing the departments, as well as the various department heads do. And I can understand Counsel Kennedy's desire to go through department by department, but I think in general, I think most of us have questions that we might like to address, have addressed, and I would be satisfied just to be able to ask several questions regarding this budget. And some of my, my questions would be to ensure that the information that you present to us goes out over the TV, TV air, so our citizens can best understand what has transpired in this budget and why it is, why it is so clear. So, Mr. Mayor, should I ask a few, my few questions at this point? And, okay, thank you.
Counsel?
All right. One of the questions, Council Malanazzo alluded to, where, when you talk about department expenditures, you have the finance plan, and in the finance plan, it basically tells for each department where the money comes from. Can you, Council, Mr. Baldwin, could you just go over that so people can understand what that really is all about?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through, through you, Counselor, this, this is something that Mr. Healy and Mr. Conley and I have been working on for the better part of this fiscal year. And this, we, we borrowed a few ideas from our, our friends in Cambridge in how they, how they lay out their budget so that we can better show the residents and those viewing the document where the money's coming from and, and where it's going. I think in, in previous years' budgets, while they've been very robust in terms of data and, you know, information about the departments, there hasn't quite been that tie between, you know, how much in taxes goes to fund the police department or how much, what are the other sources of funding in the fire department aside from the tax levy? And what we've tried to do here, as opposed to having the revenues all listed on one page and the expenses listed elsewhere with a line that says outside funding, we've tried to detail out exactly what that outside funding is. So you can see for each department, especially those that are, you know, grant-heavy, like the police department, that, that does, and they work very hard to solicit these grants. It lists out each one of them, how much is going to fund the salaries and ordinary expenses of the department. And we've tried to tie them together so people know what their motor vehicle excise tax is paying for or what their, you know, the fees that they pay for redemptions or municipal lien certificates are paying for when, when they come to City Hall to make those payments. So it, it was something that we, we carefully went through as the finance team and we, we hope provides a little bit more transparency to the reader.
Thank you. I mean, I think when you cite the police department, I think it gives a very clear picture as to where the money comes from. So thank you for that. Mr. Mayor, through you.
Just briefly, the concept of a financing plan for each department is really quite valuable to the residents and to the city council. It shows, as was said, and some people always say, why do I have to pay an excise tax? Well, if you look in here, the allocation for the excise tax is both the street lighting, which impacts your ability to drive an automobile, and the snow and ice removal, which impacts your ability also to drive an automobile. So the concept of matching revenue concepts with expenditures really is a valuable one because you all know for every penny the city spends, we have to have an equal penny to match in, in, by way of revenue. And that's what this document now shows, as Mr. Baldwin says, the concept of other income that used to appear was not very helpful, I don't think, in terms of how the overall budget was structured. So this has been a lot of work on the part of Rodney and, and Connor to put this together.
No, I, I think it's a great, it does give you a great picture, a true picture, and it's a long time in coming. Well, another question in that area to the city manager, to the mayor, is the debt service. Now, there's a list of the subsidies that are also attached to various debt services. I'm not sure the constituents really understand what goes into that and why it's such a, such a valuable number.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what's listed as the subsidies as a total and then broken out by each particular subsidy is listed on, in Section Two, page sixty-six and sixty-seven. So we've split out the debt for a number of reasons because each of the enterprise funds covers its own debt service as part of the revenues that are received by the sewer enterprise or the parking enterprise, et cetera. And the, on the right hand where it says debt position, we list out all of the subsidies that the city receives to offset some of the debt service costs. So to explain what, what some of these are, there's QECB subsidy, which is a subsidy that we receive from the federal government for qualified energy conservation bonds. And then RZEDB subsidy, which is recovery zone economic development bonds. We also receive subsidized debt service for debt issued through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. These are for our water projects and also for some of the, the sewer debt that we, we incur. And then another one, which is one of the larger subsidies that we receive, is the MSBA subsidy, which is from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This is a subsidy for school buildings that have happened in the school over the years. And you can see how that will be dropping off. It's, it's projected out from fiscal year fifteen through fiscal year 2025. But I guess to your point, Counselor, the, the city does seek outside sources to subsidize our debt service so that we can pursue capital projects as fiscally responsibly as possible. And, and harkening back to our capital plan for fiscal year sixteen, the city council approved a $9.3 million loan order, but that $9.3 million was to leverage over $16 million in capital work, and that was through grants and through federal and state funding opportunities that are, are not only listed here, but will be listed in the future.
Thank you. I think that's important to know. Thank you very much. Another question on the, the health insurance, it seems to be going down. I mean, health, health costs are, we'll say, in some areas out of control. Can you give me an idea why the projections are so moderate? To the mayor, who's very busy.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Samaras. The health insurance is, is something that surprisingly the, the cost will be less in fiscal sixteen than in, in the, the current and the previous fiscal years, which is very unusual on its face. As you know, we, we're in the group insurance commission for our insurance and a number of things were happening. So earlier in the year, the GIC commissioners sent out notification that the increase would be up to about nine percent, which we were, at the time, anticipating a much larger spike in costs. However, what, what we've seen is as, as the population of enrolled active employees and retirees age and get to Medicare age, they, you know, switch from the cost, the costly on our side indemnity plans to the Medicare supplement, which is much less costly for the city. And the newer employees that are coming on are selecting some of the managed care plans or the, the preferred network plans, so PPOs and HMOs, which the, the city's 75% share of that is much less than with one of the indemnity plans. So as each year, the, sort of the, the makeup of the, the city's insured pool changes, we're starting to see a bit of a change in the cost. So we were pleasantly surprised. It does seem like the amount that we budgeted in fiscal fifteen, there will be somewhat of a surplus at the end of the year. So because we didn't need that total amount, we, we were able to reduce the budgeted amount that we needed for next year.
Mr. Baldwin, do you see this as an anomaly or is this possible to continue?
The trend that I was talking about as retirees come to Medicare age and newer employees selecting the managed care and the preferred network plans, I see that as continuing. However, there are still active employees that prefer the indemnity plan and that's one of the benefits of having the suite of options in the group insurance commission is that there are different options available for employees depending on their, their health background, et cetera. So I, I do see it continuing. I hope that the, you know, the amount that we have to spend on healthcare decreases. Unfortunately, the other, the other side of that coin is that the cost for the insured is not necessarily decreasing. So the GIC has increased some of the copays and some of the other costs that are out-of-pocket expenses for those insured employees. So when we say the cost is going down, it's not necessarily that the cost for all of the, those who are insured is going down. It's just that the portion, so the, the city contributes 75% to the, the enrolled's premium, annual premium cost, that amount is decreasing.
Thank you for a straightforward answer. Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. Thank you. And actually, this would be, is Chief Taylor here? Chief Taylor? Through you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Taylor, I was looking in, at the budget and there are several things. First of all, I have to commend you and the city manager for the work that you did because as a council, we talked about putting more police on the street. And as I look at 14 new officers plus two from the, being replaced, two being out in the street, replaced by civilian workers, I think that's fantastic, over from 231 police to 245. I mean, how, what's, how do you feel about that and what's going on at this particular point?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Samaras. That's a tremendous, tremendous positive for not only the police department, but the city of Lowell in general, this administration under city manager Murphy, and certainly every member of this city council and, and every member of my department. It's just tremendous. We've been able to increase the sworn staffing of this police department by 14 positions since I've come on, which is essentially the same term that this council's been in session here. That's a tremendous increase in personnel. It translates directly into more offices in uniform on the streets of the city of Lowell, doing community policing, interacting with the residents and the business owners in this community, building positive relationships that are essential to build trust so that we can keep this community safe. So I, it's a tremendous, we all should be very complimentary to the work that was done that will allow this. In addition to those 14 new positions that have come on the police department since approximately November of 2013, we've also dedicated two civilian positions with this budget, which will go directly to replace sworn officers that are filling administrative or other roles in the department. I will then be able to take those two additional positions and put those offices out into uniform patrol into the community. So it's, it's just a tremendous positive and I, I'm, you know, I can't say enough thanks for the department, to the administration of city manager Murphy and certainly the city council.
No, I have one more question, but thank you for your work. I mean, I bring this up, Mr. Manager, because we're talking about a budget, a slight budget increase, but people still want to know, why do we have a budget increase? And I think there's no more, more important than something like this, that we've been able to translate into actual service. But I saw that since fiscal year 14, there's been an increase up to $40,000 in training. And I know that's training for your accreditation, but also there is many issues out there regarding training. And with all that's been going on in Ferguson, the issue of training on how to restrain training for police officers, you know, we're in troubled times. And I think your police department has stood tall during this, these past few months. Can you talk a little bit about the type of training that you're giving your police officers and how you see us handling situations that have been all over the TV?
Well, thank you, Counselor. Yes, we specifically use that funds, the $40,000, and then in addition to that, we generate training in a revolving account that we generated additional funds for training a multitude of different police officers in our in-service academy from all over the eastern portion of the state. We take all those training funds together and specifically, I think what you're alluding to is there's very much a lot of training and a lot of talk now in the profession about use of force training. Recently, I attended a conference where the, the concept was discussed about reengineering use of force in, in law enforcement. I think that's a critical necessity as we move forward. We certainly will be doing additional training, allowing use of force and more specifically de, de-escalation techniques as we deal with people with diminished capacity, substance abuse, mental illness, those type of things. So I think that definitely that will be increased training. There's also two other areas of training that I think I'd like to mention is accreditation. We are moving in a clear direction from this city council towards accreditation for this police department. And we will use some of that funding inevitably to do some of that accreditation training. It's a relatively long process. It's a year or so at a minimum, but it certainly requires additional training. The third area that we've just completed, we did receive some grant funding for this, but it certainly will be in some capacity augmented by some of our training budget, is NACAN training. So we are just in the process of completing training all of our sworn and many of our civilian personnel on the administration of nasal NACAN. And that has been a very successful program. I anticipate that will be completed within the next week or two.
Thank you, Chief Taylor. That's a good dollar value as far as I'm concerned. One more question, I promised to be quiet for a while. The fire department, through the mayor to Connor Baldwin, it looks like there was a reduction, an actual reduction in the salary category for the fire department for fiscal year 16 by about approximately $100,000. Mr. Baldwin? And this is part of the safety department and this is, you know, a place in fire is important, I think, to the city council. Any reason for that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, Counselor Samaras. The amount that's included under the fire department for salary and wages permanent, while it is lower than fiscal year 15 approved, I guess first of all, no one, no one sees, will be seeing any pay reduction. What happened here was that myself, the HR department and payroll, we examined all of the requests by the department to get the exact dollar value down to the penny that was needed for the year. And in some, in some departments, the request was slightly higher than what we thought was, was needed after our careful analysis. So we reduced that number in order to get to, you know, a balanced budget. We went through department by department and examined every salary that was submitted. And that's why you see somewhat of a difference between the amount listed in manager and the FY16 request.
So basically, no cuts?
There's, no, absolutely not. And no one will be seeing any pay reduction of any kind.
Okay. And what you're saying, a better identification of salaried positions?
That, that's correct, Counselor.
Doesn't get better than that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Elliott.
I'll say, Counselor. Counselor Rourke is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have to echo some of the comments of my colleagues. It is a complete budget, well-written and well-thought-out. It does hit the major issues of the city, public safety, education, economic development, and also the quality of life issues such as, you know, roads and lighting and so forth. And I think the city has done a good job of showing how much money comes in and how, how we do spend it. With that being said, there are a couple of questions I do have. I thank Counselor Samaras for asking the, the premium rise as for, you know, how we do save money on the, on the city insurance. A quick question on that, does, does the city going to plan on doing a review of maybe the next three to five years, projection-wise? I know you talked about Connor, about more people going through the different categories of what they do choose and their retirees and so forth. Is there a way to project money that the city will have to spend on, on health insurance going forward?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in, in collaboration with the HR director and the HR department and our consultants, we're always reviewing those costs and they're projected out for several years. It's, it's a little bit tricky to predict, you know, if someone's going to change from the indemnity plan to the PPO plan. It's, it's a personal choice. So it's difficult to anticipate migration between plans. However, based on the enrollment census, we, we do, you know, try to project out our costs and we do see them rising slightly, however, not nearly as much as the, you know, 11% on average that they were rising between the fiscal year 2004 and fiscal year 2012 period. So I don't know if, Mayor, you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Thanks, Connor. And I guess another question I had too, I know was rolled out when the initial budget was given to us a few weeks ago, but there was a $2.5 million increase in the charter of school spending tuition. I guess the first question is why the substantial increase? And again, is that something that projected going forward that's going to rise at that rate?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to you, Councilor Rourke. That is and continues to be a major challenge for the city is the charter school assessment. Each year, not only, as you mentioned here, the, the assessment increases and each year it does increase significantly if, just looking at the numbers here, going back to fiscal year 12, our assessment was $10 million. This year in fiscal 16, it's up to 18 million. And just as you said, it went up almost two and a half million over last year. So that's one challenge. However, further compounding that challenge is that the reimbursement that we receive from the state decreases each year based on the formula from, from the legislature. So last year, in fiscal 15, we were scheduled to receive $3.5 million. This year, only $3.3 million. And the difference, so the difference between the assessment and the reimbursement continues to grow. And that all needs to be funded by us. And the difference continues to be a challenge. So you've really identified one of the major challenges for the administration.
And interestingly enough, it's bad enough that you, you get the decreased money from the charter school reimbursement. Other communities, because of the decrease in the enrollment, have been able to save money in their school department. But that isn't the same in Lowell. Our enrollments are increasing. And so therefore, not only are we doing the charter school reimbursement, but we're still educating the same, if not more, students in the public schools each and every day. So it's been a, a really acute issue for us to address.
Mr. Manager, that's something that has to be dealt with through the state legislature of how we combat, I wouldn't call it a problem, but I mean, the, the rising cost?
Yeah, I mean, they're, the legislature always struggles over reimbursing you for the full amount of your charter school reimbursement. Each year, the legislature sets aside a certain amount of money, but it's, in my history there, it was never the 100%. So we'll keep advocating for that, but that is a challenge.
You know, as Mr. Baldwin stated, you know, a couple of years ago, it was $10 million and the next year, you probably look at $20 million. So in the three or four-year time period, you're going to double the, the expense, right? All right, thank you. And what I do have, to Lieutenant Taylor here, a quick question, I'm sure it's just maybe a technical question, but in looking at the list of employees in each department, you have 14 vacancies, but that was done as of April 9th. Do you still have 14 openings for, for police officers?
Currently, Counselor, we have one vacancy and then one person that's going to retire any day now. So we tried to put a total of 17 new police officers on. Unfortunately, as happens somewhat on a regular basis, we didn't actually get 17, we got 15. So because of the requirements of the testing at the state standards, the physical agility test, two candidates didn't complete it at the last minute. So we were left with two vacancies. And so what I anticipate doing, we would, can fill those with either a placement in another academy, wouldn't be our academy unfortunately, or we can seek out lateral transfers sometime later on in the summer.
So I guess the point being, Mr. Manager, that we can expect two more officers to come on board as well?
Yes, that is correct.
And as part of the capital project that, that was passed, we had the shot detection system and also the, the monitoring software.
That's correct.
How quickly we expect those to be put in place?
We did inquire with that. As soon as the, the money's available from the bonding, we intend to move forward. The people with the shot spotter program literally email me on a daily basis, so.
Ready to go.
So as quickly as, as the money's available.
Great, thank you, Chief. One final question, Mr. Manager, if possible. I did notice in the fire budget, the overtime forecast is for $800,000. In last year, we put in $1.1 million. I guess the question would be, how would that be possible to do that if going forward that the plan is only close one house per shift?
I'm asking the interim fire chief to come up and talk about the overtime and especially as it relates to the summertime and the closing of two companies?
Sure. Last year, our policy was to close only one company. And that led to the increase in, in overtime costs. And our strategy for this year is to continue to close two companies through the vacation seasons of July and August and then go to one company for the rest of the year and try to keep the number of company closings as low as possible.
So in looking at the budget last year, I mean, the vast majority of the reason for the overtime was because we only closed one company per shift, correct?
That's correct. That coupled with the fact that we had such a severe winter, we had to hire extra people during the state of emergency as well.
And so you expect some time around Labor Day going forward that we back to one company per shift?
Yes. We're actually in the process of replacing eight firefighters that have retired. We're hoping to get those people onboard at the end of the summer and then train in the academy and get them out on the streets. We've also applied for a federal grant to get an additional 12 firefighters. So if we get that federal money, we can reduce the company closings even more.
Great. And Mr. Manager, we, as a council, approved a position for a grant writer to work with the fire department. Has that been filled, that position?
Yes, it has. And Mary Ann Bellotta has been doing the wonderful job as a, as a grant, we now call her a public safety grant writer rather than a police. So she's doing both the police and the fire grant writing and she's doing a great job.
Great, yeah, knowing the job she does for the police, the fire department, she'd be very happy. So that's good news. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll say, Council. Councilor Lee is next.
Thank you. Through you to Connor Baldwin, or the manager. I noticed the electrical, electric accounts are kind of up and down. Could you explain that maybe, you know, with, with everything we've done over the past few years with Amoresco and the savings in the schools and public buildings? So I just noticed that some of the accounts are up and some are down.
Mr. Baldwin?
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we conducted another analysis on all of the energy accounts citywide. So the, the city now has an energy manager position that the council approved last year who has gone through and analyzed all of our energy accounts. She's also reallocated our net metering credits so that it's, it's to be more advantageous to, to the city. What we were seeing was some of the, the credits were being overly applied to certain accounts. So they would just, some of the electric accounts would just build up these credits and we would just have bill after bill just running down these credits. And it wasn't really helping us necessarily because we would have to pay cash on the, the bills that we had due in other, from other departments. So she was able to reallocate those credits so that the ones that had built up credits could be applied to some that didn't have so many credits. So that's one reason why there's somewhat of a variance in the, the numbers. We also have a separate agreement through the, some of the credits we received from the landfill and through, so some of the solar panels, et cetera, have been bearing fruit. So we have seen some savings in some accounts. We have seen some accounts that have been taken off the net metering credit, so we need some additional funding in those.
Like, so, and not to, just like, the police department, there's really no electric bills? That kind of?
The, the police department's electricity is funded through the, the city messenger department because it's, it's a city building. So it's technically under DPW, which houses the funding for City Hall, JFK Center, et cetera. Some of the individual departments, like the fire department, is budgeted for its own electricity accounts for all the firehouses. The library has their own budget for electricity for the Paula Memorial Library. And so that explains that.
Okay. And then a lot of questions have been asked already. So Councilor Samaras brought up the fire department. I see there's a lot of, it looks like there's a reduction, but there, as you said earlier, I guess you really went through the details. So like the gas account and electric and something else, kind of, trim those down to actuals maybe so that?
That's right. So it was based on looking at historicals over a number of years, plus anticipating some of the future needs. We do have an incredibly advantageous rate for electricity right now. However, that will be expiring after this fiscal year. So that, that's just something to keep in mind moving forward is that a lot of the good deal that we have on these electric accounts, some of our larger accounts, the contract will be expiring this year. So we'll have to bid that again.
Okay. So like the gas account and the cellular account, we trim those down. How's the gas, like, with the prices going up and down? That's, we feel pretty good with that then, I guess? Gas accounts down a little bit?
Yeah, in, in some departments, we have been able to reduce the funding for gas and motor oil. Some, some departments have a sort of catch-all account for gas and then other vehicle needs.
Okay. And then just turn it to the schools with the enrollment numbers going up, is there a need for, we're going to have to pay for trailers, or not trailers, but the?
Modular.
Modular, is that coming up in this budget or maybe into the next year?
Through you, Mayor. We haven't had any requests from the school department relative to modular, so.
All right. Okay, just, I was just anticipating that. So, I mean, overall.
Counselor, there's no money in the budget, in this budget for, for modular classrooms?
Okay, all right. I mean, overall, it is a very good, well-thought-out budget, as everyone stated. It's good to see where the money and the finances come from. It's a good explanation. And there really isn't much to trim down that I can find, you know, not anything that worth worrying about. So I think credit to everybody involved and it's a nice job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. I'd like to recognize Councilor Belanger next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like my colleagues, you know, we all went through the budget very tediously and it appears that we've all come up, you know, with the same assumption that there's really not much to trim. Each department is, if not all, are level-funded. As Councilor Mercy alluded to, great description and benchmarks each department has as far as goals and spending, very descriptive. Just, just one great piece right here, Mr. Manager. So I would like to commend you and your financial team for a very, what I would call responsible budget. And what was in your control, you did a tremendous job at. But some of these items on this budget are not in our control, okay? There's certain things that the state dictates, tells you the number, so to speak, such as pension assessments, charter school spending, cherry sheet assessments. Those are things that are out of our control. And the state dictates to us, this is the number. And that is partially, is what, from my, what I gather, dictating, justifying, if you will, this 1.5% increase. But regarding those assessments, I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, through you to either the manager or Connor. Now, example, the snow and ice budget, obviously with the winter we had, was far exceeded what we budgeted. The state is allowing us to amortize some of that over a couple of years. Can you explain, because it's only five, we budgeted 1.3, we spent almost $5 million. So we're only, have an additional $500,000. So tell me how we're going about that, to pay for that.
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at this current fiscal year, you'll see that there was $500,000 in the FY15 budget to pay for FY14 deficit. So there is this symmetry, I guess, of the $500,000 allowing to be amortized over three years, or 1.5 million of the deficit, has a relatively stable impact on the property tax. The rest of the money, the balance will be taken from savings within existing budgets, whether they be salary accounts or in some cases, perhaps the health insurance account. Wherever there can be money saved by the policies that the manager instituted on vacancy review before positions could be filled, we are accruing some surpluses that will allow us to only have to raise 1.5 million. And spreading it over three years is the one that'll have the absolute least impact on the taxpayer. And it, it, it does have obviously the downside. When you use all your balances, the free cash certification that the city council will seek come the fall will not be as large as it otherwise would have been because any surplus funds are being used to balance the snow and ice deficit. But it is the probably most efficient way to deal with the extraordinary winter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Healy, for that justification. That is quite a cost to absorb really, and great job in doing so. But with that being said, what else does the state allow us to amortize now that we're on this subject, such as pension assessments? Is there anything else that they allow us to amortize with these? No?
No, the only areas that you can deficit spend are snow and ice and judgments and damages and those all have to be raised on the subsequent years. Tax levy, except the special provision for this winter, snow and ice can be spread over three years. But essentially, we are making up for the unfunded pension liability that accrued over many, many years when communities weren't adequately paying for their pensions. We are mandated by a number provided us by the state to not only fund for current employees, but to make up and to have our pension fully funded by 2035? Is that the goal? The year is that the Lowell pension, unfunded pension liability could be funded by 2035, which then becomes the period where the city could really pay then some attention to the OPEB liability, which is just so huge, the other post-employment benefit liabilities, primarily health insurance. But the taxpayer can't absorb any community in Massachusetts dealing with both of those at the same time. So the logical way, and the way even the rating agencies understand the communities deal with it, is once you have fully funded your pension liability, you can pay some more attention to the other post-employment benefits or health insurance primarily.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Healy, once again. But one point I'd like to make, and I think Councilor Rourke alluded to, is this, this disturbing trend of charter school assessments. This, this year-after-year increase, Mr. Manager, is very alarming. I don't have an answer. I don't know if we can reach out to the delegation for assistance there, but that number is very concerning and it's going to continue to be years down the road. So one thing, that's one thing we're going to need to look at and pay close attention to. But again, you know, getting back to the budget, there's certainly no lavish, lavish spending by any stretch in this budget. But one thing does come to mind that, you know, I know this council, it's only within the scope of our authority to make cuts and not additions, but we have a total, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager or Connor Baldwin, $330,000 in other departmental expenses. Is that through every department throughout the city? If it is, that, that seems like a low number to me, but can you give me a description there? What's?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counselor Belanger, the, that is correct, Counselor. The $330,000 represents the total ordinary expenses of all city departments, aside from the school department. So that is the total amount that every expense line that you see in the budget has increased, which is staggering compared to, you know, the, the other categories that you just alluded to, the pension increase, the increase in our cherry sheet assessments, those accounts we have no control over. So just to, if I could, to put it in perspective, in the charges that we do have control over, the increase in spending is only two tenths of a percent from $333.9 million in fiscal year 15 to $334.7 million in fiscal, fiscal 16. So I do think that that's a testament to the city manager in controlling spending and, you know, making this the most responsible budget that he could present to the council as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. No doubt, you, you, Mr. Manager, your administration has certainly controlled spending. And I'd like to give a shout-out and an appreciation to all the department heads that are here this evening. That is a very low. That is a very low number for every, besides the school department, upgrades and equipment and repairs, whatever it may be, three, you can't go out there today and open a new business, a restaurant, for $330,000, if you will, but this kind of money, that's a very low amount. So, definitely, everybody is operating within their means. These department heads are doing a great job as well. They understand the situation and the times we're in, and everyone's doing a fantastic job. But, and to add, you know, you know, we do have, there's no pay raises budgeted, correct? But we do have $2 million additional in step, in other words, we're contractually obligated to pay. $2 million. Can, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager or Connor, an explanation there, where is all this money going?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. The $2 million included is both ordinance and collective bargaining agreement employees. And previously, a personnel policy was set up, where we have a grid system, where people come in, when they begin their job, they come in at the lowest step on that grid system. And then there's incentives to them to perform under that grid system. And each year, if they get a positive evaluation, then they go up to that next step. There are also, and this was a policy that has been established by the city, also under the collective bargaining agreements, they also have step increases. Again, if you get a positive evaluation, then contractually you go up the next step. It's an incentive to the, to the employees to perform well. And these are contractually obligated, and we have to pay those step increases according to the policies. And quite honestly, you know, $2 million is a significant amount, but when you think about all of the employees that we have in the city of Lowell, it really isn't that great, that significant. When you're talking about on city side, we have over 1,200 employees. So, the $2 million can be spent quickly. But it's something that if we don't have that in this budget, then we would have to turn elsewhere to pay for it. And we don't want to raid reserves to pay for those contractually obligated step increases. So, that's why we include it in this budget and not take it out of the reserves.
No, I, I agree, Mr. Manager. I just want a justification there, that, you know, that nobody is in line for a raise, besides what's, we're bound to, so to speak. So, I, I think that's important for clarification. Thank you. But a couple of positive trends in the budget were, as mentioned was earlier, was healthcare went down a tad, and trash. The cost of trash has, has gone down a little bit, and that's, that's encouraging, but other things go up, and, and there's, there's no avoiding some of them. Again, Mr. Manager, this is, I want to commend you. I do support the budget, as is. I think it's very, it would be a popular thing to do, to say, to sit here and point and say, "Hold the line," but I don't think it would be a responsible thing to do. That would only set the taxpayers up for a spike in a year or two down the road, and I don't think that's appropriate. So, in closing, congratulations to you and your financial team. I think it's, it's a tremendous job here, and I support it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All set for the discussion on this? All set? Counsel Leahy, can you take the chair, please? Chair recognizes Mayor Elliott. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just need a second to get, get my glasses. So, I also want to commend you, Mr. Manager, and, and your team. I know the call, the budget memo started last December, because my office received it as well. So, it's, you put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of deliberations. I know that the department heads certainly have had their work cut out. I appreciate all the information that is provided in the budget as well, because we went through the same exercise, even though it's a small office, and I think more is better. We will, this is one thing we'll thank Cambridge for, but we're gonna hold the line there. But I do think it, it makes sense. It, it certainly provides metrics to, to the public to say, this is what money is being spent for. You know, that, that being said, you know, I'm concerned the taxes are going up again, like, like all of us. I know that I'm not the only individual, but I, I do think the city is in good financial condition. I think there are some increases that were mentioned earlier of snow and ice that we're trying to, you know, put our arms around. Luckily, we're not alone. All other communities do the same, are in the same situation. There are no raises, there's 0% in, in this. Is that, that correct, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
Okay. But I do look at some areas in the budget, and I'm hoping that we can go through it, because I, I do have some questions, but, you know, that being said, I look at the year-to-date report, and I understand there's still a month left to go, so that, and there are bills that will come in after, but there's currently 5.3 million available in, in the budget, and I know there's still an offset for snow and ice of 3.7. So, I, I do know that there are some significant bills that will, that will come in, but my hope is that there will be, because of the policy of reviewing new purchases and reviewing positions in the budget that are not necessary, that we will have free cash this year. And I know, I don't advocate using that for, you know, for operating costs, but there is an opportunity to use them for one-time costs, whether it's capital equipment, whether it's reducing debt, that's not a recurring revenue. So, I, I do hope that we can take a look at that. And I, look, I know, I went through this entire budget, in fact, I went through it more than once, looking for areas to reduce the budget, and credit is, many, many, if not most, departments are level-funded, and some are significantly less funded than the prior year. It's the pension liability that this is the last year of the spike. Is that correct, through you, Mr. Vice Chair, to the manager?
Yep.
We had last year, I mean, three mil, making up $3 million somewhere is really a burden. And next year, do we see it, it's leveled off?
Sure, Mr. Baldwin.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, next year, we do anticipate the, there to be an increase, however, the, the rate at which it will increase will return to the normal growth pattern that we had seen prior to the last three years. So, fiscal year over fiscal, fiscal year 15 over fiscal year 14 was the largest increase. That was the three-plus-million-dollar hit. And then, this coming fiscal year was about another million dollars. However, I must add that it was scheduled to be about 1.8 million. However, thanks to the diligent work of the city treasurer, we were able to examine our cash flow, and we could make that payment all at once. So, that, that provided about $800,000 savings that we would, we would have incurred if we had to make it in installments, as we used to. However, you are correct, Mr. Mayor, that that, this will be the, the last year of the major increases, and then it will return to a more manageable growth pattern.
Because we'll have to continue to absorb that, and then in addition to, so that's, you know, that's good. I think that, that's what the public needs to hear, that we're looking at every possible option in order to keep this budget level-funded, knowing that local aid from the state, while it's level-funded, there's not, we're not seeing the growth that we have in the past. So, I do look at exemptions remain the same, personal property. I know there were somewhat of an increase in, in applications, but I hope that we can take another look, Mr. Manager. I know new growth, and we do not want to over-project new growth, but there was significant new growth in this budget, and that helps level or keep down the necessity of raising the levy. 3.1, I know it's, it's, it's wise to put in a conservative number, but as you mentioned in your opening statement, if we can reduce this, you know, if we can reduce taxes this year, I think that's one area, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're looking at it, because that, you know, that could be significant, where there's 1.4, there's about a million and a half that could, that could help us, so...
Do you want, Mr. Manager?
Through the Vice Chair to you, Mayor. You're 100% correct, and as I said in my opening statement, you have my word, that we're going to continue our conservative fiscal policy of critical examination of all expenditures, a vacancy review committee, and we're going to monitor the new growth, because as we, as we all know, is we really don't set the tax rate till November or December. And if we have some really good new growth and some savings, then we will not raise the tax levy by the 1.5% that is originally proposed right now.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I also look at the overlay, and the reason why I, I think that we could look at reducing the overlay, I know Sulee May won't like this, but if you look at the number of abatements, they have dropped. I mean, there's a significant drop from 2013 to 2016, almost 50%. I, I think that's a good sign. Is, is that accurate, Ms. LaMay? I looked in the, the data that you provided, and 2013 is 193, and projecting now to, you know, to reduce to, to 100, right?
Yes, it's less than 1% that, that we get filed.
So, I mean, I, I think that's a, a sign that property valuation, that, that we're not going to ATV that much, which means that we can reduce that overlay. And I know you want to be cautious about it, but that's another source of revenue to keep taxes down. So, you know, with that, I know there are a couple of issues that we do, the council has taken a strong position on, that I think hurts our ability to provide some services. One of them is buyback leave. Same thing on the city side, a million, over a million on this, excuse me, on the school department side. Health insurance was already discussed, that's, you know, that's a positive trend, and, you know, funding is available. So, I look at all of these revenue sources. I did have a couple of questions, Mr. Manager. One is payment in lieu of taxes. I'm wondering what that, that dollar figure is, and how is that come up with?
Do you want, Mr. Manager, or Mr. Baldwin?
Is, is that university? Is it an L? Is it...
So, through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor, and Ms. LaMay can certainly chime in here. I, I think the major payment in lieu of taxes is for the housing authority, and then we have some other smaller pilot payments, however, there's, there's not one of the larger ones that comes from the university, if you'd like to...
Does that come through the cherry sheet, payment in lieu of taxes for the university? How much do they pay us? Because now that the chancellor's gone, we, we're gonna go after them, as we said.
Mrs. LaMay?
Well, he's not really gone, but...
The university?
Well, just, I saw the payment in lieu of taxes, and I can't remember if, if we do get something, whether it's the cherry sheet or otherwise, from the universities or, or state-owned properties?
State-owned land comes through the cherry sheet?
It does.
Yes, and, and that is part of the university, the state-owned land. But we have four 121As that are still, that are still on the pilots that we get. The Lowell Housing Authority is a pilot that we get as well, and I think those are the numbers that we're talking about.
Okay, that's, that's what's factored into the, this revenue projection. Okay. All right, well, well, thank you again. I have to give you credit, I, it's, it's lean. I think that we need to continue to take a, a look at some of the recurring costs, like overtime, that, that, and I appreciate you putting controls in place to watch these, because those are areas where we can make an impact. But generally, so many other areas have been mentioned. We continue to move in a good direction with recycling and removing waste, because, you know, less tonnage costs the city less. So, I, I think those are my concerns. If we go through the budget, I have some, some cuts I'd like to propose, but, well, I know there's a motion on the floor. But thank you, Mr. Ma, Mr. Manager, I do appreciate you continue to be fiscally prudent as we move through what I think is still some difficult times, when we still sees that the charter schools that were mentioned, that's a, that's a huge hit to the city. And we're gonna educate every child in the city, but we need to get reimbursed for that there. It's, you know, it's important, we do it on, with our public schools, and the state needs to really step up. I know you used to be chairman of, you know, higher education, but that's, you can see the trend, and that, that's a real kicker, and we're holding the line on so many other things. So, thank you very much, Mr. Manager and Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Martin?
Thank you. I just, I don't, you know, I had a number of questions that other members have raised, so I don't really have any questions, but I, I did want to just say that I'm, I think this is a well-done budget, well-done document. I appreciate the information, the work that went into it. And I also appreciate the fact that we were kind of notified early. I mean, there, there really are no surprises in here. I'm looking at a memo that we got dated May 4th, you know, and all the challenges that were highlighted in that memo are presented here in the budget and addressed. So, I, again, Mr. Manager, I think you've done a good job. I think the whole team deserves credit. I think the department heads that sit behind us here deserve credit, and the employees of the city, because I think, you know, there are some people that get decent salaries that work for the city, but I think there's a lot of people that frankly don't make a lot of money. They might get a little bit better benefit package of things than you get in the private sector, but a lot of the workers for the city are paid pretty modestly, so. And I think the taxpayers get a good value. As you said, it's a level service budget, it's not a lot of extravagance, but there are certain things we need to do to run the city. So, I think this was a, a good effort, and I will, I will support it. Happy to see the work that went in, and I appreciate you keeping us informed along the way. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott?
I just had one follow-up comment, Mr. Manager. I, on the police, adding additional police, trying to get us back to a point where we were in the past, and I know it's gonna take some time, because it does cost money, but I think that's an important message, along with the education, that we, for the second year in a row, we funded net school spending, and we continue to make public safety priority number one, because, because it's important. In the last year and a half, we have seen, I think we're moving in a very good direction. I think that Shot Spotted is worth the investment. I know at, at first glance, it's a lot of money, but when it can make an impact on shootings, where they are, and that message that we're sending out to those perpetrators in the city, I think that is, we're gonna continue to make real progress with more police officers and making public safety number one. It's part of the whole, not only just economic development, but it's a quality of life, and I appreciate you putting more officers in the budget, and the public should know that that's one part of the investment in the city, that, that we continue to move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just one more question, I guess, to Connor Baldwin, through, through you. There's been a slight increase in lighting for the downtown, or lighting overall. Will that take care of this council's request to try to do a better job, in a sense of have better lighting in the downtown?
Sure. Mr. McGovern?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, definitely, Counsel. There's actually two pieces to this. There is a, a citywide audit that they will be conducting, that will look at all of lighting through not only the downtown area, but throughout the neighborhoods here in the city. And that process, the audit, will begin sometime after the beginning of the new fiscal year here in July. It will probably take somewhere around four to six weeks to conduct, and then the process of replacing some of the, the lights out in the neighborhoods can begin. But in the meantime, we understand, and we've heard the concerns from the council and, you know, the general public, even when we're out, that the downtown is just, is dark. And so, for an immediate solution, we are, we've been looking at sample lighting, probably for the last two to three weeks, more than, I think, 20 different variations of wattage, styles, and we're hoping that within the next probably four to five weeks, that we can start replacing internally here through Public Works and the electrician Steve Kuchu, and doing it in-house. and doing it in-house, and starting possibly right down Merrimack Street, down through East Merrimack Street, past the auditorium, and along Bridge Street, and then looking at some of the smaller streets in and around Kirk and Lee Street, and down onto Market Street in that area. So hopefully, we can make a difference within the next four to six weeks on, from the city side, in the downtown area directly.
Thank you for that information, and thank you, Mr. Manager, because I think it's important. I mean, you have a very tight budget, but you've still addressed a lot of the issues that this council has. So, I mean, none of us like to say any type of tax increase at this particular time, but I think the public, when they see, I think tonight, they get an idea of how the money's been spent and where it's being spent. I want to thank you and your team for doing a great job. Thank you.
Counselor Kennedy?
Roll call on the motion.
Could the clerk just, please, just read the motion as presented?
Absolutely, Mr. Man. It was a motion made by Counsel Mercy, a second by Counsel Malinazzo, to approve the budget. My recommendation is that we move on the motion. If it is favorable, then we can go to a formalized vote to accept the budget in its normal fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Roll call.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Moving forward, I will read, is there going to...
Two readings, yes.
First reading is, it'll be a full reading, Commonwealth of Massachusetts City Law and City Council's a vote approving budget for the city law for fiscal year 2016. pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 32, the city manager submitted a proposed budget for the fiscal year 2016 to the city council on May 19, 2015, and the city council held and advertised public care and to consider the proposed budget on June 2, 2015. Upon motion, the city council adopted the budget as submitted by the city manager after reductions otherwise separately voted, if any. Be it voted by the city council and the city law, that the city council of the city law hereby adopts and approves the budget for fiscal year 2016 for the city of Lowell and the codifications of all positions, including all line items and salary grid therein, as if separately voted, thereon in the sum of $334,727,172, which sum shall be appropriated and raised by taxation and other sources included but not limited to intergovernmental Second reading by Title Commonwealth of Massachusetts City Law and City Council's a vote approving the budget for the city of Lowell for fiscal year 2016. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Samaras. Roll call.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Malinazzo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. That concludes the budget deliberations before us this evening, as advertised.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. This hearing and meeting stands adjourned.